Oh, are you in, um, for the ladies first?
It wasn't chair, it was secretary yesterday.
Okay, you guys ready?
Let me tell them, uh, yes.
Okay, I'll call you order the Sparks City Council meeting, eleven twenty-six, two thousand eighteen, with a roll call, please.
Mayor Smith?
Here.
Council members Abbott?
Here.
Lawson?
Here.
Bybee?
Here.
Dare?
Here.
City Attorney Adams?
Here.
City Manager Driscoll?
Here.
We're a quorum, thank you.
Okay, if you'll all stand for the invocation of Pastor Barb West, Sparks Church of the Nazarene.
Welcome, Barb, thanks for coming.
Thank you. Would you all bow your heads and? Lord God, first of all, we want to thank you that we can gather together and you're always on duty to hear our prayer. We thank you, Lord, for Mayor Ron Smith and for this fine council. And Lord, you know the business of hand today. You know that we have placed our trust in these fine people to lead us into the end of this year and even into the beginning of next. And so we pray that as they take care of business for us, and we thank you for their leadership to do so, that they will indeed have the wisdom to know how to lead and what we need here in Sparks. We are so thankful for our city and for all of the leaders that we've placed. And so we pray a blessing upon them today and tomorrow as well. Thank you for hearing our prayer, in Jesus's name, amen.
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 Thank you, Pastor. If you'll also remain standing for the pledge of allegiance, Ms. Bybee, would you lead us?
I'd like to, please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna open up the public comment, anybody in the audience wishing to speak at this time, please fill out a card and then come on down, I'll call, um, Minette Wolls and Sherri Bellows, come on down. Welcome, the tag team. And I could say that I've worked with both of your husbands and I'm still working with your husband.
Yeah, well, don't hold that against.
I won't hold it against. There are two, are you, there's two microphones if you want, whatever you want.
Well, oh.
You, you, you share.
My name is Minette Wolls and I am the Director of Public Affairs for the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, the Sparks East Stake.
And I'm Sherri Bellows, the Director of Public Affairs for the Sparks West Stake of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints.
And we are working in conjunction with the Andaline Family Farm to do a live nativity this year, they did it last year, but they would like to spread it throughout the community and, and have anyone in the community that would like to come to, um, come to the Andaline Family Farm live nativity, so we are inviting, um, the city council and, and anybody really in the mirror to come to a special VIP tour at four-thirty on December fifteenth. You will have, um, you'll be able to come through first and, and, and see the live nativity and then you're welcome to stay and drink hot chocolate and meet and greet with any constituents that you would like, and so you could stay as long as you want. And so we have invitations here for everybody.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you.
So four-thirty at the church?
At the Andaline Family Farm on Pyramid Highway.
Okay.
And a- addresses or?
Addresses, everything, all the information.
On the invitation, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
You can bring them up and, and, um, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks, Sherri.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else in the audience wish to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. Approval agenda, five point one. Anybody want to pull anything, move it around? Mr. Abbott?
I'll be took for the agenda.
We have a motion, look for a second, Ms. Bybee?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, six, six point one, consideration possible approval of the minutes of the Sparks City Council Special Meeting for reconsideration of November ninth, two thousand eighteen, and the Sparks City Council Special Meeting for Election Results of November thirteenth, two thousand eighteen. Mr. Dare?
I move to approve the minutes for both of those meetings.
Okay, we have a motion, look for a second, Mr. Abbott? We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously, okay. Seven point one, uh, announcements, presentation, recognition items, City Manager Announcement of Vacancies on the Washoe County District Board of Health, Airport Noise Advisory Panel, Enterprise Fund Advisory Committee, and I guess I'm giving away everything you're gonna say, so go ahead and do it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, I do have announcements for some open positions on boards and commissions. The first one is for the Washoe County District Board of Health. One member to fill a four-year term must be a physician licensed to practice medicine and it will run from January first of two thousand nineteen to the term ends, um, December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-two. Applications for this position will be open until the close of business on Friday, November thirtieth of two thousand eighteen. Next, a committee member for the Airport Noise Advisory Panel. One member who must be a resident of the City of Sparks, filling a partial term which will end December thirty-first of this year and then the following, in a following two-year term which would then expire at the end of December in two thousand twenty. Applications for this, um, position will be open until the close of business on Friday, November thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. Next, we have, um, an opening on the enterprise, or we have a position on the Enterprise Advisory Committee. One member who must be involved in the commercial development industry to fill a four-year term which will run from January first, two thousand nineteen to December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-two. Applications for this position will be accepted until the close of business on Friday, November thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. And finally, for the Sparks Planning Commission, um, two members for four-year terms. Both of these terms will expire in December of two thousand eighteen and then they're available to go on for another term after that. Applications for this will be open until the close of business on December twenty-first of two thousand eighteen. So any persons that are interested in any of these positions, um, in serving on a committee or a board should complete a volunteer application available from the City of Clerk's Office. You may also apply online at the city's website, www.cityofsparks.us. Click on Government on the webpage, then click Volunteering for a Sparks Board of Commission and complete the volunteer application, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Okay, seven point two, Presentation I-11 Northern Nevada Alternatives Analysis, Kevin Berry, come on up, Kevin, how are you?
Good.
This is the most exciting thing, uh, in the state of Nevada that nobody knows about.
Right. So, thank you for the opportunity and good afternoon, my name's Kevin Berry, I'm with the Nevada Department of Transportation. I'm the Assistant Chief for their Program Development Multimodal, uh, section within their planning group. So today I'm gonna give you an overview on the I-11 Northern Nevada Alternatives Analysis, Planning and Environmental Linkage, study that we're concluding. So, it, it's important that I start out with a little bit of background because it is a planning study, it's a, it's a very long term, long-range plan that we're trying to develop. The idea of a new north-south corridor stretching from Mexico to Canada is nothing new, it's been in discussion for probably close to over twenty years. In order to, again, frame this correctly, in two thousand and twelve, we were under what is known as the, uh, MAP twenty-one, it was our transportation bill at the time. What that did is it offered a designation through Congress that basically stated that the future I-11 would fall between Las Vegas and Phoenix. The reason why this is important is because those are the two biggest metropolitan areas in the nation without, uh, interstate facilities connecting the two. So when that designation came through, we decided that it was important to study that. So through a joint effort between Arizona and Nevada's Departments of Transportation, we kicked off what's called the I-11 Intermountain West Corridor Study. That really looked at corridors between Las Vegas and Phoenix, but more importantly, it also looked outside of those areas to further connect that, make that connection between Canada and Mexico. So we also did some high-level planning for connections from Phoenix down to Mexico as well as from Las Vegas up to the northern border of Nevada. In two thousand and fourteen, we, uh, finished that study, uh, recommendations came out for that connection between Las Vegas and Phoenix, but important, more important to us is that it also described a connection between Las Vegas and the northern part of the state. What it did is we looked at, um, the western side of the state, the middle part of the state, and the eastern side of the state. It was determined that the western side of the state met, uh, Nevada's goals in terms of economic development. We presented this in the I-11 Intermountain West Corridor Study to our Transportation Board, it was approved. Not only was the corridor recommendations between Las Vegas and Arizona approved, but also that western side of the state being the next study area for future I-11. And I know a lot of people throughout Reno, Sparks, Washoe, went to great lengths to meet with delegations in Washington to help, uh, facilitate some of the things that did happen afterwards. So in two thousand and fifteen, MAP twenty-one expired, two thousand and fifteen, the, uh, FAST Act, which is our current transportation bill, was passed. Congress then, within that bill designated future I-11 between Las Vegas and I-80 to fall roughly on the ninety-five corridor. Successful, uh, study in the I-fifth, or the previous study of I-11 Intermountain West Corridor Study, recognizing that western side of the state. So that's how we got to where we are today. Once it was determined that we had that, not only our board's approval, but also that congressional designation, we said it's time to start, uh, a corridor analysis to better position the department and the, uh, communities along this corridor if, uh, lands bill were to, uh, advance. So that's where we are today. So, I, I gave you guys a, kind of a history on I-11 and the reason is, is because we're in that very beginning stage, we're in that planning stage and we want to make sure that we're, we're setting the table correctly, not only, uh, for the department internally, but also for any stakeholders such as Sparks. This is a four-hundred-and-fifty-mile-long corridor that we're currently looking at. It can't be done in ten years, it probably can't be done in forty years, but what we want to do is incrementally start making some improvements and this starts that, uh, starts that process. As you can see, we have a number of other steps that we still need to take, but again, we are trying to position ourselves in the planning group to make sure we're, um, providing our department with as much information as they can to efficiently transition into those next steps. So, study, so the big picture, what are our study goals? We want to advance I-11 through a federally recognized process. That title, I-11 Northern Nevada Alternatives Analysis, Planning and Environmental Linkage, is long and it's long for a reason. That planning and environmental linkage process is a federally recognized process that we can do at this early planning stage to help advance that next NEPA stage. What it does is it allows us to take the ideas that we've, we've developed to sort of forward into NEPA to have an easier, more efficient transition. So, we want to make sure we're documenting all those issues and opportunities so that we can inform that next step. We want to also formulate a, uh, ten-to-twenty-year plan to advance I-11. Again, this isn't to say we're gonna complete I-11 in the next ten to twenty years, but what it does is it gives us a pretty clear roadmap of how we're gonna keep that momentum. Both Nevada and Arizona have been doing a excellent job at keeping that momentum moving, demonstrating that need for a new north-south and this will just help us continue that process. And like I stated earlier, we want to make sure we're prepared for any future lands bills that might come in to preserve some of that right away in case we do need it or when we do need it. So the study area, uh, I explained it was, FAST Act designated it basically within the ninety-five corridor. We decided to break this study area up into two segments, segment A and segment B. Segment A is from roughly Kyle Canyon up to Tonopah. Uh, segment B is from Tonopah up to Interstate eighty. As you can see, we, in segment A, we didn't have a lot of, uh, options, that was due to, uh, what, land ownership. Um, the Navy or the Air Force owns quite a bit of land over there and then we had some topography issues as well towards California. Segment B gets a little more interesting, what we determined were, that we had four viable options. Uh, we did a real high-level look at these and then, um, basically what we're gonna, what we've done is we've taken them through this evaluation using the criteria on the right side of the screen. This criteria mirrors what we used in the I-11 Intermountain West Corridor Study except we've added technology and the reason why we've used this, uh, criteria is that it meets, it demonstrates that what we need an interstate facility to do, it meets the purpose of need of what an interstate facility needs to accomplish. So in March, we kicked this study off, we held, uh, six community meetings to start with. This included also a stakeholder meeting as well as a resource agency meeting. What we did there is we just introduced the project. We introduced the alternatives that we were gonna start studying, the methodology we're gonna deploy. Within those first, uh, meetings, we had some consistent concerns. Are we really evaluating all the promising corridors? A lot of concerns throughout rural Nevada was what happens to their town? How does a interstate facility actually interact or integrate with the town? And then a lot of questions, uh, popped up regarding what happens to this future I-11 after the interstate. So, uh, we took that back, we developed some white papers that are available on the website in which we demonstrated, uh, through some research that an interstate facility really doesn't have a negative or a positive impact on a, on a community and the way we, what, the way we basically formulated that hypothesis is that we looked at, uh, how other towns have reacted to, uh, similar situations throughout the nation to, uh, an I-11 or a future interstate. That's available, like I said, it's, it's basically that economic look of how an interstate facility affects small towns. We also then, within that paper, demonstrated six examples of how an interstate facility might run through a community. Uh, there's a number of ways we can do it, bypass, through, bifurcated. So we wanted to make sure we were giving all the smaller communities enough information so that they could start making some informed decisions themselves. The what happens north of I-80, that's a big question. Uh, I-80's a great term and I for this study because it's a, it's a, it's the east-west corridor that we need to hit to get movement that way, in the other direction. So, what we wanted to do here is we looked at freight plans for our neighboring states, California, Idaho, Oregon, Washington, and also even, uh, looked into some of western Canada, just to make sure our recommendations were forward-compatible with their freight plans as well, as well as any critical corridor plans they may have on the books. This was, again, just to show that of the, of the options that we're showing, all of them would be forward-compatible with anything that those states might be doing. Like I said, Nevada and Arizona have been very proactive, I-11 kind of, we're the I-11 motivators. We're hoping to move that into the states to the north soon. We also held seven community meetings, um, in July, August. This was to provide, um, an opportunity for input into our recommendations. We added a meeting, uh, we met in Carson, Reno, Fallon, sorry, uh, Hawthorne, Tonopah and Las Vegas the first time. We added firmly for the second time. We also had a Facebook Live available for our meeting in Carson City, so that was a good option for people that couldn't attend. So we had a lot of, um, we had a lot of material to digest and also, uh, display to the public and to all the stakeholders. The way we did this is, what we developed were basically pinwheels and within these pinwheels, each pinwheel represents a corridor and within each pinwheel, we've kind of placed a pie and shaded that pie. The, the pie represents a, a corridor or the, uh, criteria used, so there's a cost in every single one, there's a, uh, economic vitality in every single one, and then we shaded that to demonstrate from a most favorable to a least favorable. This was done not only to help digest what was going on, but to help us, uh, show how the corridors kind of measured up. The, the B corridors, if you remember, that's in, uh, segment B, that was from Tonopah up to I-80. Those were compared against one another, whereas, uh, in segment A, we only had really one alternative and we compared that to the no build. So, the options that we've, are asking for, uh, that we recommend moving forward for future I-11 are A-one, of course, B-two, which is ninety-five, and then B-three, which is alt-ninety-five. We feel that they're, they're, uh, excellent, uh, options to leak into the I-80 system. They complete, they, uh, complement existing facilities. We want these plans not only to help NDOT internally move forward, but also to have, um, communities look at these plans and be more proactive with some of the decisions they're making as they move forward to help with their, not only land use plans, but economic development plans and any other community investments they may see. We did, as I noted, we did develop implementation plan, a ten-to-twenty-year implementation plan. So, we have immediate actions, short-term, midterm and long-term. So immediate actions include assisting some local communities with, uh, understanding I-11, what they can do. We're actually meeting tomorrow with Beatty and the next day, Tonopah, to have a workshop to help them understand how they can start looking at this plan and informing their next steps. We're also exploring some other partnerships with entities along the corridors, including, uh, the tribe at, uh, Walker River. As you can see, we have some short-term, uh, action plans. Again, the land management agency is very important as we want to make sure we're in a position if any land use, or land, uh, land bills come, come to fruition. Some midterm include advance, uh, the project development and construction of some of, uh, segment A. What we're going to be doing pretty quickly as a department is understanding how we can get I-11 through Las Vegas. As you know, we've got I-11 basically built, it was the Boulder City bypass, but that's where it stops. That was, uh, somewhat of a lucky situation in which we were already building a facility around Boulder City. Met with the purpose and need of what I-11 should be, so we signed it I-11. So now we're gonna have to look at how we get around, um, the Las Vegas Valley, but we also want to start advancing that segment A. Uh, again, we're gonna start looking at what we can do with segment B, that's a little harder, uh, due to some of the owner, land ownerships around there. Remember, we're trying to build an interstate facility that has limited access. That's gonna be really tough throughout, uh, most of Nevada due to the fact that the ninety-five has a lot of, lot of driveways that can hit it. So we've got to start thinking in very small incremental steps, looking at what we can do in terms of safety that will then be forward-compatible with any interstate facilities. Some next steps include, and this is, I, I apologize, we, uh, did end our official public comment for the corridor analysis document. It's about a three-hundred-page document that basically takes all of those criteria, puts numbers towards them and, uh, explains the reasoning behind that. It's a pretty large document, it's available online, uh, you're more than welcome to look at that and if you'd like to have some comment on it as well. We've been in public comments since March with the public outreach and, um, this just formalized it. We're gonna take it to our State Transportation Board on December third for approval of our recommendations and then we are also currently meeting with, uh, the Federal Highway Administration to get them to sign off on our Planning and Environmental Linkage checklist. There's a checklist that goes with that process that they agree with what we've done and they're willing to let those advance into those next steps. And then again, we're, we're gonna continue to work with communities along the future, uh, alignment. So with that, um, I, if you guys have any questions or want me to go back to any slides, I'm more than willing to do so.
Questions or comments, Mr. Abbott?
Yeah, I got, uh, two questions. Um, on the technology category, what, I guess what defines technology and road world? So what we were looking at is how So what we were looking at is how, what we could do in terms of placing infrastructure in there to help with broadband. Um, if there's any way we could help co-locate some facilities to have uh, fiber. Also, as you're, you're all aware, autonomous and connected vehicles is fast approaching. And we're kind of trying to understand how we can better prepare the department to fit that niche. So those are some of the things that we looked at.
Gotcha. And then my second one, is there any upcoming meetings or anything else publicly?
So the next meeting will be at our board meeting, December 3rd. Uh, that's, that's a 9:30 start. It'll probably be the longest agenda we've had in four years considering Governor Sandoval's uh, it's his last meeting, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You know, and it's, the, the corridor is not only for, for the highway, it's, it's utility corridor, probably, and maybe even rail going uh, using the same corridor.
That would be the, that would be ideal. We still looked at this as an interstate facility due to the fact that Congress designated it as a future interstate facility. But what, what would, what we would want is to have that co-location so we're not continually having this take issue. If we can get enough right of way established to where we can fit, or any, any sort of infrastructure needed to move goods and services, that's where it should go.
Mr. Lawson?
Well, in some of your meetings was, you're meeting with the small towns and I just happened to talk to some people from Boulder City that were kind of upset they didn't put another exit into Boulder City because there were just one in and one out, vice versa, one in and one out going the other way. Is that something you guys helped them understand? Because I could see in Beatty's case, that's a big deal for them to have all those cars go through there. And it's just right for a, a gas stop. And, and the same thing, I, I noticed too, it's going around um, Walker Lake. Is that to miss the Indian Reservation also?
So we will be, so, oh, let me get this up again, sorry.
Going east of Walker Lake is what I gathered.
So this, this, if you look where C is right here, can you see my pointer?
Yeah.
That is too constrained of an area to widen. Plus you get a lot of, there's a lot of wildlife that come down uh, grant to go to Walker. And there's a ton of access right there. So what we want to do is try to figure out, we propose going this way. We still have to, so these are big swaths, these are corridors. There could be three different alignments within that blue line saying where it might actually sit. So that's, that's again, we want to make sure that we're framing it correctly. And that's, that's a tough part.
Big question for Hawthorne too. You could skip Hawthorne altogether, huh?
And we will not, we're not skipping Hawthorne. We've, we've made it there. Well, we're not, it, it could go on the outside of Hawth- or bypass Hawthorne, which I think would be to the benefit of some of these smaller communities.
Would be what, east of the military base?
Yeah, because I think the military base is, it goes right here and then here. And I know they, they're, they've been working really well with the military in terms of economic development plan. Try, you know, the military is doing a great job of keeping that uh, that uh, munitions depot up and running. They're, they're actually renting some space out for uh, some rehabilitation.
They have top rails stored there now with the rail cars around from the entire nation store down there. And they've opened up thousands of acres to private development too. So it's, it's exciting. Can't wait for it to happen. You, so you anticipated building similar to what the, the freeway is between like Wickenburg and I-40, where you have sections of dual lane highway, then it goes back to two lane, then it goes four lane in the back?
That would be, yeah, so that's, Arizona's, that's what they're doing right, right now is they're like, okay, we can't take this to a full interstate facility where we have that limited access only or using interchanges. So what they're doing is they're doing those incremental improvements, taking it from a two lane to a four lane divided, still with access issues. But that's our plan too, is to start making the 95 safer.
Makes perfect sense. And it keeps the traffic flowing.
Yep. So you've driven that a couple times?
I drove it every month uh, for many, many years.
Yeah, it's a tough one. And I always like to preface that I-11 is gonna still have to um, prioritize against the rest of our needs. It's gonna, we know there's a need out here, but we know that 580 has a huge need. We know that 580, 80 has a huge need. That's what we're addressing, we're trying to address currently. And I don't want to get too far off topic, but it just demonstrates that we're not, this still has to be uh, a priority. If, if Fernley grows by 20, you know, 20 times, then yeah, we're gonna have to get in there pretty quickly to figure something out. But we still need to care about what's going on with 80 East Canyon down in Vegas. So it's still gonna have to prioritize. But what we do need, what is always a top priority for the Department of Safety. So as we see improvements needed on the 95, we can say, okay, this is, this is uh, forward compatible with what we want to do with the interstate. It's a good investment. So we're not having a bunch of throwaway.
Mr. Derry, did you?
No.
Um, the Navy just announced they're acquiring, they're gonna acquire 600,000 acres. Is that gonna affect the, the, the route? Because that, I think that'll go down.
That's over.
He sure is, right in.
That's, yeah, that's over in this area, right. That's the Navy right now. And they're gonna be like that big. We are, we're actually, we actually, we're actually in discussion of how we're gonna move this road right now.
Uh huh.
We were talking, and that's to gab, um, we've been in constant contact with the Navy uh, through their EIS. Their EIS is out right now for public comment. So if you guys have a comment, times now. But we've been giving them all of our files so they understand where we're at. Uh, they're in agreeance. We might be able to get some accommodations from them because we are splitting their um, facilities. They have exercise facilities on one side of 95 and then uh, another exercise facility on the other side. So there might be some, there's always chances for two agencies to maybe cooperate, federal, state, I don't know, but we'll try.
Good luck. Okay, any other questions or comments? Thanks, Kevin. Appreciate it. Come back again.
I will.
Keep us posted.
I will.
Okay, thank you.
Are you done with uh, RTC then?
No, no.
Okay.
No, he's trying to get rid of me?
No.
You're the voice of reason there.
No, no, it's uh, I'm still the chair until January.
Good. All right. I'll see you guys. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
Okay, move on to consent items. Anybody want to pull, pull a consent item? Okay, looking for motion. Mr. Lawson?
Move to approve consent items 8.1 through 8.5.
Okay, we have a motion. Looking for a second, Ms. Bybee?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the consent items. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, general business 9.1. Consideration and possible approval of the mayor's nomination of a mayor pro temp from the following pool of council members listed in alphabetical order, Donald Levitt, Charlene Bybee, Christopher Dare, and Ed Lawson. Um, so, you know, I, I don't, I don't have my computer here, so I can't go to the item exactly. But um, my choice for the mayor pro temp is uh, Councilman Lawson. Um, uh, he's, he's been around the longest and he does a great job. And be honored to have him serve. So looking for a motion. Mr. Derry?
I would like to say something and make a motion.
Okay.
I just want to say that I, I've been here for two years now. And I think Ed, you're, our mid-councilman Lawson, sorry, you're uh, I like how you approach business. I like what you do. And you've done some awesome stuff around here. And you being here has definitely left its mark on our city in a very good way. And honored to make that motion that you'd be called uh, Mayor Pro Temp.
Okay, we have a motion. Uh, looking for a second, Ms. Bybee?
I'd like to second that motion with comments. Um, I highly support uh, the nomination of Councilman Lawson. I think he brings to the table um, the next second most experience in years on this council, second to you, Mr. Mayor. And I think that that uh, is valuable to all of us as we learn. Each year we're on the council, uh, there's more to learn. So it's still a learning process for me after four years. And I think that um, Ed with eight years' experience and what he's been doing for the city, I think is an excellent choice. So I second his nomination.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. You get to vote for yourself. It passes unanimously.
Ed, congratulations.
Okay. Need a name tag for him. Okay, 9.2. Consideration discussion and possible approval of a contract AC 5537 for the 2019 Audible Pedestrian.
It's over.
You're right.
Somebody booby trapped my chair.
With a push-button federally funded project, bid number 1819.
I just got elected Mayor Pro Temp. Come on.
Amber, welcome.
I'm out of here already.
Uh, Mayor Smith, members of city council, Amber Sosa, Transportation Manager. Um, I'm presenting today a contract with Titan Electrical Contracting in the amount of $262,880. This will be for the 2019 Audible Pedestrian Push Button Project. The State of Nevada Department of Transportation, NDOT, provides transportation alternatives program funds, so TAP funding, which are made available to the state through the Federal Highway Administration. The TAP provides federal funds for community-based projects that expand travel choices, enhance the transportation experience. In 2016, NDOT made federal TAP funding available to support bicycle, pedestrian, multi-use path, and transportation-related projects. The City of Sparks applied for funds to update various existing signalized intersections with audible pedestrian push buttons to better serve our pedestrian community, focusing on our blind pedestrians. NDOT notified the city in 2017 that $270,000 had been programmed towards this project. To initiate the project, the city entered into a cooperative local public agency agreement, an OPA agreement with NDOT in January of 2018. Requirements for this project included NDOT overview through multiple design submittals, bidding, awarding, and will continue through construction of the project. City staff was responsible for preparing design and bid documents and will be providing construction management and administration. The project involves upgrading 33 existing signalized intersections with audible pedestrian push buttons. Uh, the map before you, although it's kind of zoomed out, I apologize. The little green bubbles are the intersections that we would be looking to update with this project. It's anticipated that the project will utilize all the existing wiring and underground conduits that already exist at the intersections. The project will require the city to initially fund 100% of the construction costs. Once the, once the project is complete, NDOT will reimburse the city 95% of the total actual construction costs. Based on the contract bid amount, reimbursement is estimated to be $249,736. The reimbursed funds are anticipated to go back into roadway fund 1401 to help fund the spring of FY19 Street Rehab Project Unit 2. The project advertised on October 3rd, and the city received two qualifying bids on October 24th. Titan Electrical Contracting submitted the low bid in the amount of $262,880. This is the contract before you today. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions or comments? Ms. Bybee?
So Amber, on the um, it's showing that our, the amount, uh, the budget amount for right now is $262,880,000. That is the, the, our construction cost to build, but we will be reimbursed for 95% of that once it's complete. So that, that will not be our out-of-pocket at the end of the day?
No, the TAP, the TAP programs provides 95% of the cost. So our cost would be the 5%. So yeah, based on the 262,880, we should receive back $249,736.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just want to be clear. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Lawson?
Great job. We like these kind of grants. Anytime we can get 95% funded, that's a great job. Thank you.
Okay, any other uh, questions or comments? Looking for a motion? Ms. Bybee?
I move to approve the 2019 Audible Pedestrian Push Button federally funded project contract to Titan Electrical Contracting in the amount of $262,880,000.
Okay, we have a motion. Looking for a second, Mr. Abbott? We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, Amber. Good job. Okay, 9.3. Consideration discussion and possible approval to participate in agreement AC 5534 negotiated by Nevada Health Partners with North Nevada Medical Center to provide hospital services to members covered by the city's group health plan for the period of January 1, 2019 through December 31st, 2021. So it's for two years?
Three.
Mindy, welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Mindy Falk, Human Resources Manager for the record. For your consideration is the participation agreement for Northern Nevada Medical Center. The current agreement expires December 31st. This new participation agreement will begin July 1st and is through December 31st of 2021. As in the past, the agreement we are recommending to the city to participate in was negotiated between Northern Nevada Medical Center and the Nevada Business Group on Health, or NHP for short. NHP is, NHP is a group of private and public self-insured employers who are committed to containing healthcare costs. By working with NHP, the City of Sparks benefits from the volume discounts of buying for a bigger group. Approving this participation agreement would allow members of the City of Sparks Group Health Plan to continue to receive hospital services at Northern Nevada. NHP has negotiated competitive rates. And in 2019, the remains will, the rates will remain flat. In 2020, a 3.5% increase and a 4% in 2021. Using the 2017 claims data to help us estimate costs for 2019, Sparks would pay $95,193. In 2020, $98,524. And in 2021, $102,464. These costs could change depending how much or how little our members utilize the facility. I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Okay, questions or comments for Mindy? Mr. Derry?
I'm ready to make a motion if you'd like.
We're ready, sir.
I move to approve participation in an agreement negotiated by NHP with NNC for hospital services for employees, dependents, and retirees covered by the city's group health plan for the period of January 1st, 2019 through December 31st, 2021, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement for these services.
Okay, uh, we have a motion. Looking for a second, Mr. Lawson?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. And you're up with the next one too, aren't you, Mindy?
I am.
Okay, uh, 9.4. Consideration discussion and possible approval to participate in an agreement AC 5535 negotiated by Nevada Health Partners with Renown Medical, uh, Regional Medical Center, Renown South Meadows Regional Medical Center, and Renown Skilled Nursing Facility to provide medical services to members covered by the city's group health plan for the period of January 1, 2019 through December 31st, 2021, and authorization for the city manager to execute the, uh, the agreement for these services. Mindy?
Good afternoon, Mindy Falk, Human Resources Manager. For your consideration is the participation agreement with Renown Medical Center, Renown South Meadows Regional Medical Center, and Renown Skilled Nursing Facility. This agreement includes, but is not limited to, inpatient hospitalization, outpatient, emergency room, urgent care facilities, laboratories, radiology centers, skilled nursing, and rehabilitation services. This current agreement also expires December 31st. The new participation agreement will begin January 1st and go through December 31st, 2020. Similar to the Northern Nevada agreement, the agreement was, we're recommending the city to participate in was also negotiated between Renown and Northern, and Nevada Business Group on Health. In the first year, the rates remain flat. In 2020 and 2021, the increase is based on this CPI medical rate and is no less than 2% and no more than 5%. These rates do include the utilization of using Hometown Health as the city's third-party administrator. If the city chooses another administrator, the cost of the hospital contract would increase. Using 2017 claims data to help us estimate the cost of 2019, Sparks would pay $2,169,526. In 2020, $2,278.2. And in 2021, $2,391,910. These costs also could change depending on how much or little the members use the services. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions from Mindy, comments? Seeing none, looking for a motion? Mr. Abbott?
Um, I move to approve participation in an agreement negotiated by NHP with Renown for medical services for employees, dependents, and retirees covered by the city's group health plan for the period of January 1st, 2019 through December 31st, 2021, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement for these services.
Okay, we have a motion. Looking for a second, Ms. Bybee?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. And Jen, this is, this next one is yours, but you might as well stay there because you're a- Passes unanimously, and Jen, this is, this next one is yours, but you might as well stay there because you're right after her. Nine point five, consideration discussion and possible approval of an agreement AC five-five-three-eight with Hometown Health Providers Insurance Company to provide third-party administrative services for the city's self-funded group health plan for the period of January one, two thousand and nineteen, through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one, in the amount of eighteen eighteen dollars and eighty cents per member per month for the first year, estimate of a hundred and forty-eight thousand four hundred and ninety-six dollars. Welcome, Jen.
Yes, sir, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Council Members. For the record, Jen McCall, Human Resources. I'm here today for possible approval of an agreement with Hometown Health to provide third-party administrative services for the city's self-funded group health plan through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. Our current contract expires on December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen. Hometown, as our third-party administrator, processes all of our payments for medical and dental claims. They provide our preferred provider network of physicians, hospitals, and medical facilities. Hometown handles preauthorization for inpatient and outpatient services, and they provide large case management support by using registered nurses. In addition, Hometown administers payment to other health plan providers for pharmacy, stop-loss, Cobra, and life insurance. With the help of our broker, LP Insurance, we were able to negotiate a competitive renewal rate, which also includes performance guarantees for financial accuracy, claims administration, and call center statistics. We therefore recommend a renewal with Hometown Health for third-party administrative services for the city's self-insured group health plan. And may I answer any questions for you?
Any questions or comments? Okay, Jen, we're looking for a motion? Mr. Dare.
I would like to say I, I am appreciative that you get these in blocks where we get the best deals. I think that's the best way to do it because we have no idea what's going to happen in the next couple of years, but we know we get locked in, so good job on that. With that said, I will go ahead and make motion. I move to approve the agreement with Hometown for administrative services and customer support for employees, dependents, and retirees covered by the city group health plan for the period of January one, two thousand and nineteen, through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion, looking for a second, Ms. Bybee.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously, thanks Jen.
Thank you.
Okay, nine point six, Mindy's back. Presentation, discussion, and possible approval to amend Appendix A in the Executive Employee Resolution R three-three-four-four effective October first, two thousand and eighteen, to update the classification compensation system following review. The estimated cost of the general fund is zero dollars for the next three years. All yours.
Mindy Falk, Human Resources Manager for the record. This agenda item relates to the executive resolution Appendix A, but I thought I would go over the global for all of them, and then when I get to each agenda item, speak about the changes for that resolution or contract. So, and September tenth, two thousand and eighteen, the City Council adopted a new classification and compensation system using the HAY method. At that time, Human Resources presented a natural step that any new class and comp system would be to look at positions that were compensated differently in the new system versus the old. And in this case, it was anyone that was fifteen percent or less getting paid less. So of the hundred and eighty-eight positions evaluated, sixteen were identified as outliers. The sixteen positions expanded to twenty-four positions because either we added new positions to the complement that hadn't been previously looked at by HAY, or that we looked at the entire job family because it just made sense. Of the twenty-four reviewed, fifteen went up a level, five had no change, two went down, and two were the new titles. In this resolution, only one position was reviewed by HAY and recommended it went up a level. This is reflected in the Appendix A, and there is no cost associated with this recommendation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions or comments? Seeing none, looking for a motion? Still looking for a motion. There we go, Mr. Lawson.
I move to approve the amendment to the Executive Employees Resolution, am I on the right one?
Yep.
Executive Employee Resolution Appendix A, effective October one, two thousand and eighteen, to include a change to the level and pay range for the position of Parks and Recreation Director.
Okay, we have a ma, a motion, looking for a second, Mr. Abbott.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously, okay, Mindy, we're up again. Nine point seven, presentation, discussion, and possible approval to amend Appendix A in the Assistant Senior and Chief Assistant City Attorney's Resolution R three-three-four-three, effective date October first, two thousand and eighteen, to update the classification and compensation system following review. The estimated cost to the general fund is zero dollars and nineteen, five thousand three hundred and forty-three and twenty, five thousand seven hundred and forty-two and twenty-one. Okay, Mindy.
Good afternoon, Mindy Falk, Human Resources Manager. This is our second agenda item related to the outlier process. This was one that the whole job family was looked at, so all seven of the positions are recommending a change, and they're all going up. And as you mentioned, the total cost for the general fund is zero in nineteen, fiscal year twenty-twenty is five thousand three hundred and forty-three, and fifty-seven forty-two in two thousand and twenty-one. With that, I can answer any questions.
Okay, any questions, comments from Mindy? Seeing none, looking for a motion? Mr. Dare.
I move to approve the amendments to the Assistant Senior and Chief Assistant City Attorney's Resolution Appendix A, effective October first, two thousand and eighteen, to include changes to the levels and pay ranges for the positions of Assistant Attorney One and Two, Criminal Assistant City Attorney One and Two, Civil Assistant City Attorney Senior, both criminal and civil, and Chief Assistant City Attorney.
Okay, we have a motion, looking for a second, Ms. Bybee.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, nine point eight, this is you again, Mindy, I think you had a couple more. Presentation, discussion, and possible approval to amend Appendix A in the Confidential Employee Resolution R three-three-four-zero, effective October first, two thousand and eighteen, to update the classification and compensation system following review. The estimated cost to the general fund is zero dollars and nineteen, zero twenty, and zero and twenty-one. Okay, you're up, Mindy.
Mindy Falk, Human Resources Manager. There was one position reviewed in this resolution, it's a very small resolution, and it was recommended that it go up one level. And even though it did go up, there was no fiscal impact at any of the three years evaluated.
Okay. Any questions or comments from Mindy? Ms. Bybee.
I'm ready to make a motion.
I was premature on my button press.
Go ahead, Ms. Bybee.
You or me? Okay, I move to approve the amendment to the Confidential Employee Resolution Appendix A, effective October first, two thousand and eighteen, to include a change to the level and pay range associated with the position of Executive Assistant.
Okay, we have a motion, looking for a second, Mr. Abbott.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, nine point nine, presentation, discussion, and possible approval to amend Appendix A in the Mid Management Professional and Technical Resolution R three-three-four-one, effective October first, two thousand and eighteen, to update the classification and compensation system following review. The estimated cost of the general fund is five thousand nine hundred and eighty-four dollars in FY nineteen, eleven thousand five hundred and sixty-three in FY twenty, and sixteen thousand four eleven in FY twenty-one. Yes, the estimated cost to other funds is three hundred and nineteen dollars in FY twenty-one. Okay, Mindy.
So this resolution is the Mid Management Technical Group. There was eleven positions reviewed. There were two titles that were never leveled before, so they were new titles. Four were recommended to go up a level, one went down, and four remained the same. There is one agenda typo in there, and that is the Recreation Supervisor should be Recreation Manager. That title just got switched, it was a human mistake, and I apologize. The cost of the Appendix A items in general fund are five thousand eight hundred and ninety-four in fiscal year nineteen, eleven thousand five hundred and sixty-three for twenty, and sixteen thousand four eleven in two thousand and twenty-one. And then in two thousand and twenty-one, there's three hundred and nineteen in other funds.
Okay, questions or comments? Ms. Bybee.
I have a question.
Sure.
So the increases are spread among the, you said some are staying the same, but yet we're looking at, we're looking at, every year, there's a cost to it. It's spread amongst these positions with the change in the classifications?
The ones that went up, yes. So the, there were some that went up a level, so four went up a level, and that's the cost associated with those.
So the ones that were changed versus the ones that were added?
Right.
At the increase?
Both, you're right. So it was the added titles, and then the four that would, went up a level, so those six, that's the cost associated with it.
That's a cost associated with it, okay, thank you.
Okay, where are we at here? Did you make a motion?
I was just, no, I just had a question.
Okay, Mr. Abbott.
Yeah, is this it for outliers? Is that every?
So this is the last group that's systematically going to be reviewed. We are actually working with the department heads. This week, we're starting the next level of, and those will be people that were below fifteen and between negative five and fifteen.
Okay.
So there'll be a second group coming.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any more questions or comments? Right, looking for a motion? Mr. Abbott.
Yeah, I move to approve the amendments to the Mid Management Professional and Technical Resolution Appendix A, effective of October first, two thousand and eighteen, to include changes to the level and salary ranges associated with the positions of Assistant City Clerk, Capital Projects Coordinator, Civil Engineer Senior, Recreationer, Recreation Supervisor, and Police Services Manager, and to add the job titles and associated salary ranges of Parks and Recreation Administrative Manager and Information Technology Administrator.
Okay, we have a motion, looking for a second, Ms. Bybee.
Second.
Ms. Manager.
I think that on the Recreation Supervisor should actually be Recreation Manager. That was the typo that we made. Just adjust the motion, that would be appreciated.
Yeah, we can make that adjustment.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
And the second one agrees?
I agree with that change, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously, thanks, Mindy. Thank you. Okay, nine, nine point one oh is the first reading, Ms. Gardner.
This is the first reading of Bill number twenty-seven fifty-two, in ordinance amending chapter thirteen point three-six point oh nine oh of the Sparks Municipal Code, modifying limitations on wastewater strength applied to significant industrial users, local limits, and providing other matters properly related thereto.
Okay, this is the first reading for Bill number two-seven-five-two. The public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular City Council meeting on Monday, December the tenth, two thousand and eighteen. Okay, nine point eleven, Ms. Gardner, a first reading.
This is the first reading of Bill number twenty-seven fifty-three, in ordinance amending chapter thirteen point oh nine and thirteen point two-four of the Sparks Municipal Code, to increase sewer and storm drain user rates five percent annually from July first, two thousand and nineteen, through July first, two thousand and twenty-two, to set multifamily residential and mobile home user rates equal to single-family user rates on July first, two thousand and nineteen, to increase the sewer connection fee by thirty percent on January first, two thousand and nineteen, and to increase the storm drain connection fee by two point nine six percent on January one, two thousand and nineteen, to annually adjust sewer and storm drain connection fees per the Engineering News Record Construction Cost Index beginning on January one, two thousand and twenty, and providing other matters properly related thereto.
This is the first reading for Bill number two-seven-five-three. The public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular City Council meeting on Monday, December the tenth, two thousand and eighteen. Thanks, Teresa. Okay, number ten, move on to number ten, public hearing and action items related to planning and zoning, ten point one. Mindy, you're back, aren't you?
Yeah.
Presentation, discussion, and possible approval of a memorandum of understanding between the City of Sparks and the Operating Engineers Local Number Three to amend the Appendix A in the contract AC five-five-one-zero for non-supervisor employees effective October first, two thousand and eighteen, following a classification and compensation system review. The estimated cost of the general fund is two thousand five hundred and ninety-seven dollars in nineteen, two thousand one hundred and twenty dollars in FY twenty, and one thousand nine hundred and seven in FY twenty-one. Mindy.
Mindy Falk, Human Resources Manager. This is our final agenda item related to the HAY outlier process. This one's a little different because it is a memorandum of understanding because this is the Operating Engineers Labor Contract, not a resolution. In this contract, four positions were reviewed, two positions went up, one went down, and one stayed the same. The fiscal impact to the general fund in nineteen is actually a negative twenty-five ninety-seven. No one's pay is being reduced, it's just the result of the budget.
Oh, I missed that because the negatives on one line and the rest of it's on the other one.
It is confusing.
Yeah, it is confusing.
In fiscal year twenty, it's twenty-one twenty, in fiscal year twenty-one, it's one thousand nine hundred and seven. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, looking for a motion? Mr. Dare. Oh, I'm sorry, forget that motion for now. If this is public hearing item, I'll open it up to the public. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak at this time?
What are you, new?
Never done that before. I know, thanks for the, thanks for the backing. I'll bring it back to the council for a motion, Mr. Dare.
I am ready to make a motion. I move to approve the memorandum of understanding with the Operating Engineers Local Number Three.
Okay, we have a motion, looking for a second, Ms. Bybee.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
My unit turned off.
So you're an aye?
I'm an aye.
Okay, we're, it passes unanimously. Yep, I, I think if we, yeah, passes unanimously. Thanks, Mindy. Okay, we're going to move on to planning and zoning, there are no items. I'll move to comments. I'll open up public comment period, anybody in the audience wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. Comments from the Mayor, City Council, and City Manager, Ms. Bybee.
I would like to encourage everyone to get online and vote for the Sparks Hometown Christmas Parade. You can vote once per day, and it's online as USA Today, and we're in fourth place. We are ahead of the Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade. So everyone can spread the word, share it with your friends on Facebook, and just go online to, I know the City of Sparks has a link, Julie's put one up there on the City of Sparks website for, and I think you have until, Donald, when is the, the voting is still, for another ten days or till?
When?
Through you, there's still a lot of days to vote, and you can...
Six hours and something. Thirteen days, I'm sorry.
Thirteen days, so for the next thirteen days.
Or six hours, whatever comes first.
So vote, so vote for the parade and attend the parade this coming Saturday on Victorian Square and the tree lighting on Friday night. And I'm sorry, I'm going to be out of the country, I'm going to miss it, but encourage everyone into ten and to vote for our parade, thanks.
Okay, Mr. Dare.
Anybody looking for a place to help serve Thirty-Nine North has a, a whole volunteer system they put together for Thirty-Nine North Pole. And so they're looking for volunteers down there, and it's a great time, they have a lot of fun. And so if you go on Facebook and type up Thirty-Nine North, or just look for it, you can have a place of volunteering, and it's great for the community. I want to invite you.
Okay, Mr. Driscoll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to advise the council, so it's been a while since we've talked about it. There is a meeting on Thursday from five-thirty to seven at the Sparks Library. It's going to be discussing, there will be a formal presentation and discussing the Audi Wells Project, updating that corridor to complete street. Part of my wanting to draw that to your attention is, A, public meeting forward comments, but B, you gave me instruction a long time ago when we received a couple of presentations from RTC staff that whenever possible to remind them that we would really appreciate when they start the construction of that project to consider between Silverado Lane and Sullivan of doing that part of the corridor first because of the investment and the economic redevelopment that's going on in that area versus starting at one end of the other and eventually getting there. So I have prepared a letter with the approval of the mayor to Mr. Gibson just to remind him of that, and I'll be handing it to him at that meeting just to update this council's request on numerous occasions to try to do that section first, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other qua, ah, comments, any other comments? Okay, seeing none of that objection, we are adjourned. Thank you.
She wants a minute, and then I'll call this to order. Oh, we need a, Teresa, we need for voting, for Ed.
We'll just have to do voice, it sounds like it ran out of...
Okay.
It has power.
It has power?
Yeah.
We could do voice, too. Julie, are you ready? Okay. I'd like to call to order the Sparks Redevelopment Agency Meeting of Monday, November 26th, with a roll call.
Chairperson Bybee.
Here.
Agency members Abbott.
Here.
Lawson. Smith.
Here.
Dare.
Here.
Agency attorney Adams.
Here.
Chief Administrative Officer Driscoll.
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item number three, public comment, do I have any public comment? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Item number four, point one, approval of the agenda? Do I have an approval?
Second.
I have a motion by Agency Member Lawson, a second by Agency Member Smith. I guess it's a voice vote, all in favor? Aye.
Aye. Aye. Oh, it's here.
Oh, is he there? Try it. Oh, there we go. Okay. Okay, item number five, minutes, 5.1, consideration, discussion, and possible approval of the minutes of the Sparks Redevelopment Agency Meeting of October 22nd, 2018. Do I have any corrections, additions, or motion to approve? Agency Member Dare.
I move to approve.
Okay, I have a motion to approve, do I have a second? Agency Member Abbott. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Item 6.1, business items, consideration, possible acceptance of the report of the claims and bills approved for payment and appropriation transfers to the period of October 4th, 2018 through November 7th, 2018, for possible action. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Motion approved by Agency Member Smith, second by Agency Member...
Second.
Second, thank you. I'm just looking at your name.
Well, you never said the last name, I was waiting.
Second by Agency Member Abbott. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Item number seven, 7.1, comments from the public. Any comments from the public?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
It would appear that we might have a couple of students in the audience who are here for some type of participation in government, might want to hear from them as members of the public.
Okay, I would invite any of you that are here, if you would like to comment at this time.
Look at them, raise up there.
Come on down.
Don't everybody hurt yourself, get down here.
Or just tell us who you are, what school you're coming from, and is it for government class? Just come down here, just introduce yourselves and tell us where you go to school. And you don't, you can just introduce yourself and tell us where you go to school, and if you're here for a class or a project, and if you wanted to say anything else, you could, but if not, just an introduction would be great.
So I'm Ellie Mustard, which is fitting with the shirt. We go to Reno High School, and we're in Richard Clark's AP Government class, and we're here for open public service hours, even though we're only Reno citizens, we just decided to come to Sparks.
Good choice.
Really good choice, and your name?
My name is Daphne Quint.
Okay, and you're both in Mr. Clark's class? I know Mr. Clark when he was at Bishop and Oak High School, so tell him hello, from Mrs. Bybee.
Yeah, have you heard about his We the People program?
Yes. Are you part of We the People?
No, we're just AP Government, but it's a really nice program, if you guys like, I don't know if you guys can stop in at any time, but it'd be great to have government officials, like, talk to them, I guess.
That'd be great, thank you for the invitation. Thank you, girls. Okay.
We got one more, dear, come on down.
Do you want to introduce yourself? I know I'm supposed to speak public comment, but...
That's right.
Can I be conversational? Yeah.
My name is Matthew Bigger, I go to Reed High School, and I'm actually not here for class, I'm here for something for Boy Scouts.
Eagle Scout.
Yeah, I'm hoping to get there, yeah. I'm here for requirement in citizenship in the nation, no, citizenship community, a lot of citizenship funds.
We're all in the nation.
So I have to, I'm supposed to attend a city council meeting and say how you handle disagreement, but you haven't disagreed on any.
We're pretty agreeable here, Sparks, yeah, I wasn't going to have a lot of disagreements.
Wait till we get outside.
Thank you so much for being here today, we appreciate it. And we could direct you to some other jurisdictions, which shall be unnamed, but Sparks is...
But those meetings are like 10, 12 hours long.
Yes, so this is a great meeting.
But there's lots of disagreement in those.
Thank you for coming from Reed High. Okay, item 7.2, comments from the Agency and Chief Administrative Chair Officer. Any comments? No? Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Lawson.
Mr. Lawson.
Well, you didn't turn it over so she could see you, that's why.
Well, I can kind of...
I just wanted to remind you, there's a parade and a Christmas tree lighting, in case you weren't here for the last meeting.
Just thank you, that was a good FYI.
Yeah.
Okay, seeing no other business, this meeting is adjourned.